Use your hands.
Okay. Seven o'clock. I'd like to welcome you to Lunenburg zoning Board of Appeals. I will tell you how the meeting is going to proceed. However, first I have to give you a notification that the hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of open meeting law. Please be advised that this meeting will be broadcast live through a local access cable, on Facebook Live, on the Facebook public page, and will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Public Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. And the way the hearing will proceed, first I want to introduce the board. My left Lisa Normandin, Board Secretary. I'm Alfred Gravel. James Bezinkowski. David Blatt. Patrick Callahan. Tony Nacastro. And Don Gurney. The way the hearing will proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You'll please come forward to the mic and give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions that they might have on the application while you're at the mic. There will be a public comment period. You will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and address all comments and questions to the board. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the petition.
Okay, this is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Matthew Glennie of 55 Valley Road in Lunenburg, seeking a special permit to construct a 28 by 28 garage with an accessory dwelling unit above. The questions and answers to the four special permit criteria. Please describe how the proposed action will prevent conditions that are injurious or dangerous to public health, unduly hazardous because of traffic conditions, danger of fire or explosion. The reply is none. Please describe any material adverse effects on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood. The reply is none. Please describe how the proposed activity, use or activity will be operated with reasonable regard for order and inciteliness if in open use. Not applicable. There's a determination letter from the building commissioner. His comments. "The use as a detached accessory dwelling unit is allowed by right per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48. However, the building height must still comply with the local bylaws. In Residence A, Residence B, or Outlying District, the vertical distance between any point on the roof of a building, whether main or accessory, and any point on the side or real lines of its lot shall not exceed the horizontal distance between the same two points by more than five feet. The height along the rear exceeds the maximum height by 16.5 feet and along the sideline by 11.5 feet." I have received... All the abutters were notified two weeks prior to tonight. There are building plans attached and a site plan. We did receive a revised site plan tonight from the applicant. And the Board of Health had these concerns, which will probably be addressed at the time of the building permit. She had no comments at the time. This is Carla Oljarz. She is our Board of Health agent. "The following information will be needed in order for the Board of Health to consider endorsement of building permits. Floor layout of the existing house, a two-compartment septic tank or two tanks in series will be required. Title V inspection report if an increase in design flow is proposed. The septic system will need to be upgraded in full compliance with Title V to accommodate for increase in flow. Alternately, a septic system in full compliance could serve the accessory dwelling unit. The plan shows two bedrooms proposed in the accessory dwelling unit, and according to the assessors' records, there are three bedrooms in the existing house. The existing septic system is designed for three bedrooms. With this information, the existing system will not accommodate for the increase in flow. I recommend contacting an engineer to see if it is feasible to expand the existing system or to design a separate, fully compliant septic system to serve the ADU." And Matthew Glennie responded. He's loaded the new septic plans, and he's working with Masdan Engineering. But I just wanted to add that as a side. And I received two letters in hand tonight to whom it may concern. This letter is from Catherine and Thomas Sharbar of 45 Valley Road, Lunenburg, abutters to the Glennie property. Matt has informed us that he plans on constructing a garage on his property. Matt has shown us the plot plans and pictures of the proposed construction. After discussing this with him, we have no concerns, issues, or objections with him pursuing this matter. If you have any questions, you may contact us and their phone number, and that is signed by Catherine and Thomas Sharbar. Also, this is from John C. Jones of 50 Valley Road regarding the proposed construction of a garage and ADU at 55 Valley Road. I have reviewed the plans for the construction of a garage and ADU that Mac Glennie is proposing for his property at 55 Valley Road. I have no objection to this project as proposed and would support the granting of a special permit allowing him to proceed with construction. Sincerely, John C. Jones." And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And with that, I would invite the applicant to come up to the mic.
Hello. Matthew Glennie, 55 Valley Road.
You can add whatever you would like to it, but I know you said there's a change on here.
There's a slight change. There was a miscommunication with the certified plot plan. He put the building as 28 by 28. He had a copy of the building plans, but didn't add the stairwell to the rear. So it shows the actual 28 by 28 building at the rear lot line to only be at five feet, but the actual rear wall of the building will be at nine feet. The edge of the... The outside edge of the stairwell would be at the five-foot mark.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have anything else you would like to add?
I think it's... No, I mean, I have a small lot. I'm trying to do what I can with it. Yeah.
That's what, a half-acre lot?
Yeah. Yeah, it's 150 by 150.
Okay. And where the shed's going, of course, is going way back in the back corner.
The shed has already been moved across the... Is that what you said?
All right.
The garage is going in that back corner.
Going in that?
Yeah. It's pretty much the only place on the property that is feasible to put it. The septic system pretty much takes up the rest of the...
Okay. And a lot of why you're putting it... Is part of that because of the septic system? Where you're gonna have to place it when you...
Yeah, I believe there's plans attached for the expansion. The leach field sits to the left of the house, so that's already there. It's a pump system. The tanks are directly in the backyard. I don't... There's very limited space to put the garage anywhere else. And there's an existing gravel driveway down the side of the house, so it just... It just makes sense to place it there.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna open it up to the board. Any questions?
So I did have a question on the septic. I don't... I didn't really notice a septic plan in the permit, in the application at all.
I thought I uploaded it. Not great with computers, but I might have messed it up. There was two separate septic plans. There was a... We were looking at options to make it a one-bedroom ADU. At the end of the day, we did decide to go with a two-bedroom, and I do have plans for both a four-bedroom system and a five-bedroom. We are gonna go with the five-bedroom. I have the systems in my email if you need it, but I do have plans drawn for a five-bedroom system.
So you have already perked the land... You know that the land... You know that the area for the septic is gonna support a five?
Marsden drew the plans and is already... He has all the numbers and data on that. It's already been... It's an expansion of an existing system, not a new system, so...
So is that part... I mean, you know, that should be part of this permit when you apply?
I...
Would think, Mr. Chairman.
Well, yeah. That would come under the Board of Health.
Board of Health. Okay.
And my engineer is working with hers. Well, I don't know if he's contacted her directly yet, but I have a copy of the plans, and he's supposed to be contacting her to have everything squared away, so...
Okay.
As far as that goes.
All right. And I took a drive-by, and I understand it's not a... Not the... It's a pretty dense area. My concern is, is how close this is actually to the neighbor, not on your... If I'm looking at your house, not to the left, but to the right, the neighbor on the right, how close the shed is, it's this garage is. Is the reason for the location basically so you're trying to fit it as much on your lot as you can?
Well, I mean, I can't build it off the lot, so I gotta put it where I can put it, and there's nowhere else to put it. There's a septic system. So this... I'd be on top of the septic system if I moved it forward and in.
Well, I mean, it looks like from... I'm looking at your plans that you have at least the good... Could at least the rear... The rear... The rear, you could at least... You don't really need the relief. You can move that forward.
There's gonna... On the new septic plans, I have to add a tank 'cause there needs to be two tanks in series. Is that the existing septic that you're looking at?
That's the only thing I have is what you've...
Okay, yeah. So that's the certified plot plan, which just has the existing septic on it. There's going to be an additional tank as per the Board of Health. So I have to put a separate tank in that back corner beside the existing septic tank.
And they're all gonna feed into the...
So they're in series. So both tanks will run into a single chamber, then into another chamber, and then into the pump chamber, which then pumps to the leach field. Correct. Yeah. It's been fun. So there's very limited space on the property.
Do you have to expand this septic?
Leach field?
Field?
Yes.
Leach field?
Yeah. Like I said, I thought I had it... I thought I had uploaded at least one of the variations of the plan. I believe it was a four-bedroom plan. I do have in my email a five-bedroom system plan, and it will fit, so...
So you have three bedrooms in the existing house?
Correct.
You're gonna have two in this one?
In the ADU.
Okay. You originally put three, didn't you?
I put three.
Oh, maybe.
No, three in the existing, two for the ADU above. Yeah, yeah. So it'll be a five total.
Yeah, okay.
And you have town water?
Correct. Yes.
Any other questions from the board?
As to the first part of your question, though, the lot line to the right, looking at my house, the lot line is close, but his property is well over... I'd say close to 100 feet away. His actual building. There's no building in my rear... Like, abutting my line.
Understand. I mean, it's just that his yard is not that large either.
Correct.
And there's a structure now as close as it could be to his yard as possible.
Correct. Yeah.
Which, you know, I don't know if they're here, but...
He... It's a rental property. I have reached out to him previously. I never got responses.
I noticed that. I saw that the address was New Hampshire.
Yeah. Yeah. It's been rental for a while. I have tried to correspond with him. Just, you know, about trees and everything else. I don't usually hear back from him, so...
And the reason for the stairs? I didn't get it. I'm just... I thought the stairs were gonna be on the left of the building. I'm seeing now that the stairs are in the rear of the building?
There's stairs on the left of the building. There needs to be two exterior egresses because I'm gonna have it as a completely separate unit from the garage. There'll be no access to the above apartment from the interior of the garage, so I have to put a stairwell to the rear and a stairwell to the left side of the garage.
All right. So you're already proposing that this building is an extra four feet away from the lot line?
The rear... The rear wall itself. So that height calculation is based on the rear wall? The rear wall would be four feet further forward. The stairwell will be at the five-foot setback.
Okay. No, I'm just going by the plans you've given us.
Yes, yes, I understand.
That's showing only five feet.
Yeah. I tried to update... I had a bit of an issue with my... Yeah, I tried to just draw out to explain. So the... I had an issue with the surveyor, and I've reached out to him multiple times to have it adjusted, and I had this meeting already. I'm here. I'm gonna have someone cite the property again. I just haven't had time to do that, so... But the rear wall of the building will be at nine feet. The stairwell will be at... It's a 42-inch stairwell off the rear of the building.
Right.
Not stairwell, stairwell.
I understand.
And that outside would be at the five-foot mark or further forward than that. It's a 42. I left for 48 inches, you know, added to that.
So you're saying the 16-foot relief is based on that nine foot?
It's not. It's based on a five-foot setback.
Okay. So you're looking for a relief of only 12 feet?
However you calculate it with your... And I don't know how you do it with exterior stairwells, if it's the same calculation as a wall or... That's, you know, more in your court than mine. But yes, essentially, there is a slight difference because the wall itself is further away from the lot line at the rear.
Okay.
If that makes sense. Sorry.
I understand. No further questions.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. If there's no other questions, I'll open it up to the public.
Master's take.
Would anyone from the public like to speak? Seeing none? I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I do have none. So for this ADU, I'm assuming that it's a possibility of it could be a rental?
It will be a rental, yes.
It will be a rental. So where is the proposed parking?
It does... There is plenty of parking, but under the ADU bylaw, I believe I only need one space. There's six parking spots in the front. There's the gravel driveway to the side. And obviously, there'll be a driveway up to the garage doors. So, yeah. That'll all be maintained. There's already...
But the garage will be for you. Are you...
Correct. Correct. Yes. Correct. Yeah, it'll be a completely separate unit.
Good. Good. I'll ask one more time. Public, anybody? And nobody. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we grant the request for a special permit with a variation for the dimensional variations as requested, provided that all boards are accommodated with their procedures and so forth.
Yeah, that'll all be copied. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. I'll take a vote.
Aye.
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 And aye. With that, I... It's granted. I do have to redo the post-decision instructions. The special permit is granted with the contingency that petition complies with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit-granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with conditions. Noncompliance to such conditions may result in a revocation of the permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the Registry of Deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded, and the special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use or construction has commenced. With that, good luck. We as a reality.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just in case anybody needs to close out. Okay. And with that, Lisa?
Ready? I'm ready.
You're ready? And with that, Lisa, if you would read the applicant's?
The next petition tonight is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Daniel and Rachel Brackett, 850 New West Townsend Road in Lunenburg, seeking a special permit pursuant to zoning bylaw Section 250-4.1H6 Townhouses. Proposed action has not begun. Basis of this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw. Section 250-4-1H6. Street address of the property is 850, 852, and 860 New West Townsend Road. Assessors map five, parcels three, four, and five. Name and address of each holder of legal title to the land, which is the subject of this case, is Daniel and Rachel Brackett, 850 New West Townsend Road in Lunenburg. The deed is recorded in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 5111, pages 18, 36, and 38, recorded January 8, 2004. The question-and-answer portion of the application. "Please describe any material adverse effects on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood." The reply. "Proposed residential development will likely increase the assessed value of the property. As such, we expect the proposed development to have a positive effect on land values in the neighborhood." B. "Please describe how the proposed use or activity will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use." The reply. "The proposed project is abutted by a town forest and conservation land on the Lunenburg-Fitchburg Town Line. The proposed townhomes were set approximately 500 feet off New West Townsend Road, minimum, and will comply with the dimensional zoning setbacks defined in the bylaw for zoning... Outlying zoning district. Please describe how the proposed action will reduce and/or prevent noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent properties. As mentioned in the previous response, the proposed project is abutted by the Willard Brook State Forest on... in West Townsend Road Conservation Area. The proposed townhouses will be constructed approximately 500 feet away from the road and in compliance with the zoning setbacks defined in the bylaw. A vegetated buffer will remain along the property lines to provide screening for the proposed development. Given the nature of the proposed project, the proposed development is not expected to produce significant noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare at the property lines." The applicant intends to make filings with the Board of Health, the septic permits, Lunenburg Planning Board, Stormwater and Common Driveway Special Permit, and the Lunenburg Conservation Commission Order of Conditions for the proposed project. This is an addendum or a letter with the application. "To whom it may concern, this letter has been prepared on behalf of Daniel and Rachel Brackett for a zoning determination request filed by this office for a proposed project at 850 New West Townsend Road in Lunenburg. The applicants currently reside at 250... Should be 850 New West Townsend Road and also own 252... Oh, I could be wrong. 252 and 260 New West Townsend Road. I believe that should be..."
Yeah, I feel sorry.
Okay. That's what I thought. 850 New West Townsend Road, also 852 and 860. The road immediately adjacent to the 860 New West Townsend Road property. The properties at 852 and 860 New West Townsend Road are currently vacant and wooded, and the proposed project will occur entirely on these two parcels. The project involves a subdivision of the parcel into four lots and the construction of a five-unit townhouse on each lot. A common driveway is proposed to service all four lots, which will be constructed in compliance with Section 256.4C7 of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw. Each townhome will be served by an onsite sewage disposal system and well. The property is bisected by the Lunenburg-Fitchburg Town Line, and as such, the A&R Plan for the proposed subdivision will require endorsement by both the Fitchburg and Lunenburg Planning Board. Preliminary review of the attached plan by the Fitchburg Building Department has determined that the proposed lots must comply with the dimensional requirements set forth in the Fitchburg zoning bylaw. As such, the proposed lots have been designed to conform to both Fitchburg and Lunenburg zoning bylaw. The construction of the proposed driveway will require work within 100 feet of bordering vegetated wetlands that exist on the property. The portion of proposed work will be jurisdictional to the Conservation Commission and will require an order of conditions prior to commencement of construction. And that was put forward by Dillison Roy Civil Design in Lunenburg. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. That's signed on June 13 by Daniel and Rachel Brackett. The building inspector's determination... I'll just read the comments. "The use includes the construction of townhouses, a use that requires a ZBA special permit per Section 250-4.1H6. Planning Board site plan approval per 250-8.4A5. The common driveway requires a planning special permit per 250-6.47A. A stormwater permit per 204-1D for disturbing greater than one acre. It should be noted that the number of units to be created will trigger 250-4.1B1 for affordable housing." And that's from Commissioner Gingras. There's also a plan, a site plan, plans of the proposed condos. And we have a blow-up there. And there were a few comments from other boards. The Fire Department... This is from Christos Lekaditis. "No issues with the ZBA application. One item of note we'd like to point out is that the proposed buildings will require automatic sprinkler system as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 148, Section 26I. While we are aware that there is not an adequate water supply available, this law does not allow the sprinkler requirement to be waived. However, it allows the installation of other types of fire suppressant systems as allowed in the Building Code. Should this process move on, please keep communications with the Building Department and Fire Department early on to discuss options for a suppression system." and Fire Department early on to discuss options for suppression system. The Conservation Commission Agent Jamie Herlin said the proposed project will require a notice of intent. The Board of Health has the following conditions. Each unit must have a source of potable water. If Pierce Town Water is proposed, each unit must be served by a sewage disposal system in compliance with Title V and the Lunenburg Board of Health Sewage Disposal System Regulations. No plans for sewage disposal systems have been provided, and a review of the subdivision plan indicates additional testing will be needed. No burying of wood waste from lot clearing operations is allowed without compliance with 310 CMR 16.000 Site Assessment Regulations. Any fill brought onsite must be clean and comply with DEP, ABC, Asphalt, Brick and Concrete Rule. Any blasting materials shall not be perchlorate based. All detentions, retention structures shall minimize standing water. All phases of construction shall be done to minimize noise, odor, heat and dust that would be injurious of public health and/or cause a condition of air pollution. Depending on past uses of the property, address any potential contaminants which may be in the soil, i.e. orchids and arsenic. I think Brian's letter was covered, but this goes on to talk about the Mass. Department of Housing and Community Development and the set-aside dwelling unit shall qualify for DHCD subsidized housing inventory for the town of Lunenburg and shall count to the mandate of the housing inventory threshold set in Mass. General Law, Chapter 40B1. A development containing 10 or more units shall set aside 10% of the units as moderate or low-income housing, units, I'm sorry. A development containing 36 or more units shall set aside 15% of the units as moderate or low-income. I don't think I need to go on with that.
No.
So, all the notify, all the abutters were notified two weeks prior to tonight's hearing, Fitchburg and Lunenburg both. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I take it you're representing?
I am. Thank you. Folks, Greg Roy with Dillison Roy this evening, representing the applicant. The brackets are here. Dan and Rachel are here as well, and we appreciate your time. As always, I appreciate the thorough record read there. I feel like I sometimes don't have to make a presentation at all, but I will. So, I'll give you an overview. Some of that I'll rehash, maybe just using slightly different words. But the property is located, so, New West Townsend Road, I've finally got a really bright laser pointer, so I apologize in advance, but, New West Townsend Road is right here, and that runs right along the Lunenburg-Fitchburg line, if you're aware of that. Howard Street was kind of down off the page down in here. So, Howard Street comes down, tees into New West Townsend Road, and then it come up here. So, that's, that's the area of the world that we're, we're talking about this evening. The property is in excess of 30 acres, and as we, as was read, we're proposing to create two, excuse me, four additional lots. So, the existing house is right in that location there. That's 850 New West Townsend Road where the brackets live. In the balance of the property out, out behind here, we're proposing to subdivide into additional four lots. The reason we're only, only proposing four lots is because of the soils. We did do soil testing. I did note the, there was a comment about soil testing from the Board of Health, which I guess is the only comment that I disagree with. We have, we have done soil testing witnessed by the Board of Health in all of the areas that we're showing. We just don't have five, we're not in more than four areas, so we can't really propose any more than four septic systems. Otherwise, this might have been a subdivision, you know, more, more conventional subdivision type development. But because of the limitations of the soils, we have, we have those areas shown. We have one up in the front here, and we have one here, here and there, and those have all been soil tested in, as witnessed by the Board of Health. As we, as was mentioned, we're proposing the four lot configuration, the pink or peach outlines are the, are the proposed locations of the townhomes. I want to make that distinction. Your bylaw in this zone, which is an outlying zoning district, allows both a multifamily development by special permit and also a townhome development. They distinguish those two uses. Multifamily would be four or less, and it doesn't necessarily have to be in a townhome configuration. You have a separate definition for townhomes, which can be five or less. So, we're proposing that here, and just wanted to make sure we distinguish between the multifamily use. So, it's a townhome proposal that we're proposing. And we're proposing to access those with a shared driveway. So, we'd be accessing from New West Townsend Road and approximately that location right there, and it's about 1,000-foot-long driveway, which has been laid out in accordance with the town's, I say newly established, but almost two years old now, new common driveway regulations, 18-foot width, turnaround for fire and the like. This plan is not a detailed construction plan like we would be submitting to the Planning Board. We understand we will need, if we're successful here, we would need a, we would need to prepare that plan, grading, drainage, stormwater management, erosion control, layout information, profile information. That would have to be submitted to both the Planning Board for a common driveway special permit and a joint stormwater management permit. So, those are two future permits that we would need. Again, this is our first stop, but we, we do note that we have to do those, as Lisa mentioned. And that same plan would also be submitted to the Conservation Commission to request an order of conditions pursuant to the Wetlands Protection Act and the town's Wetland Protection bylaw. So, we understand all that. We also have an overlying town line, town-city line, which is right here. It's hard to see on the plan. But the frontage of this lot is in Fitchburg, and the bulk of the work, all of the structures and most of the infrastructure for the site does occur within Lunenburg. So, the A&R Plan that we would ultimately need to file will need to be endorsed by both the Lunenburg Planning Board and the Fitchburg Planning Board. As Lisa mentioned, we've been in contact not only with, with Mr. Gingras, but also with the, with Felix at the, in the Fitchburg Building Department. We follow the form of intent through that process as well, just to make sure we had everything covered. And that's what really led to the layout of the lots. The lots, the frontages on New West Townsend were actually increased to comply with Fitchburg's frontage requirements. Your frontage requirements are 100 feet. Fitchburg's frontage requirements are 175 feet. So, we have 175 feet with the exception of one reduced frontage lot, which Fitchburg allows, down to 40 feet. We're showing it at 50 feet because your regulations govern on those. Your reduced frontage requirements are at least 50 feet. So, we're, we've held to the most restrictive dimensional lot requirements from both City of Fitchburg or Lunenburg in all the cases of those lots. So, generally speaking, we've clustered the, the proposed townhouses, which again are five-unit buildings in a typical townhouse configuration, around a turnaround. Again, it looks like a cul-de-sac. It's not a public road. We're proposing, we're proposing a common driveway. But we did, we did feel it, it might be advantageous to show a more robust turnaround there than, than a, than what you would more commonly see on the end of a common driveway turnaround for fire protection and the like. And those, those structures are located around that turnaround primarily. The closest point of the structure on Lot 4 to New West Townsend is about 500 feet. So, that point right there to New West Townsend, that's about 500 feet through the woods. That's the closest point of, of any of the proposed structures to the street. Most of them are set back greater than 750 or almost 1,000 feet. The property on the northerly side up here is all state, state-owned land, and it's completely undeveloped. So, there's no, there's no structures in that direction. There is a house right in this area. This distance is about, is in excess again of 500 feet across there. And then there's an existing house on the old Pierce's Tree Farm property, which is, abuts this to the south. There's a house right about where my cursor is. Man, that light is blinding. I apologize. And then the O'Brien Project, abuts, just for reference, abuts on the, on the easterly side of the property. But again, we're quite a ways distant from that. It's about, I think, 500 feet there to the, to the rear property line. It's 200 feet from this, on, the offset from this property line to that structure is 200 feet. So, we have the advantage here of having 30-plus acres of land, significantly oversized lots. Your outlying zoning district requires 80,000 square feet. These are all 2X, if not more, than, than the required amount of land area. So, we have the advantage of kind of setting these way off the road in a, in a place that we do not believe they will be visible for, for, in any significant fashion to any of the abutting properties or the street. As, I think, I'll kind of leave it at that. We did submit some basic architectural renderings, just to give you an idea of what we're proposing for those. But row townhouses, like you would see, like, like you probably have in your mind, is what we're proposing. Fairly good-sized units. And as, as we said, we're proposing onsite septic and wells to support those, because there's no town water or sewer, of course, available in this area. So, I think that's all.
Okay.
I'm sure, I'm sure they'll have questions, but I'm happy to take any comments or questions.
Thank you. We're just, the Conservation Commission is set up in an abut, where is that? Where is there?
Where's the jurisdiction?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, there's a wetland system on the northerly side, right in that area there. So, most of the, maybe with the exception of the, of the first couple hundred feet, this section of the road in there would go through the buffer zone. So, we've designed this to be completely in compliance with their regulations. So, there's no work proposed in the 30-foot, no disturb. There's no structures proposed in the 50. And we've, we've tried to keep, there's actually, with the exception of one small little edge over here, all of the buildings are outside of 100 feet. It's just where the driveway needs to go through that, that one section of the buffer zone is really what we're looking at there. But be that as it may, you know, if you're in it anywhere, you need a, you need to file. So, we need a full-blown order, order of conditions. And because this, this is more than four units, residential units, the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act requires compliance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Policy, which is sort of a little redundant in this case, because we also have to comply with that relative to your local stormwater bylaw. So, we'll be reviewing that twice. We'll be reviewing that with the Conservation Commission, but also through the Planning Board process. So.
Okay. Thank you. And all of the, all of the townhouses, they're all three-bedroom?
We're, we're proposing that now. Whether, I would imagine we'll probably have a mix of some twos and threes, but, you know, we set it up so that, you know, from a, you know, from a planning standpoint, as three bedrooms, I would imagine we'd have.
I know that this is earlier here, just for years.
Yeah. Right.
You know, I was curious, because it's like 15 bedrooms and.
Yeah.
It's quite the.
We've, we've set the septic systems up for that. So, the septic systems, again, they're designed on real perk test data. We did the perks. We've done the deep test holes, and we've designed those systems to accommodate that. So, it's, it's a pretty big site, so we have the advantage of being able to, you know, have enough area to breathe out there, so to speak. So, that's the way we've set it up. Whether or not we end up with some, a mix of twos and threes is yet to be determined, but we wanted to come in and tell you what it ultimately could be.
Okay. And also, you, you mentioned, of course, the law that would, affordable housing.
Yeah.
Just a question. I know that, you know, affordability is a key question for a lot of people, especially young people trying to get into the pocket. Making the townhouses like that, does that decrease the cost where we are?
Yeah, well, generally speaking.
Putting five units in one structure?
Yeah, I mean, generally speaking, when you can increase the density, you know, you're going to decrease your costs. Affordable, affordable units and affordable, real affordable prices on market rate units is always a difficult thing to talk about because it's market-driven, right? So, the, the developer could come in here and say that he's going to sell these units for $400,000, and he might do that. He or she might do that. But then two years later, the, the person could go, go ahead and sell that thing for whatever the market bears, and that could be, I don't know, whatever, 600,000 or 800,000. So, we know for a fact that pursuant to your bylaw, this is a, a development that has 10 or more lots, but less than 36. So, 10% of these units or two will need to be, will need to meet the definition of your affordability criteria. So, those will have to be deed restricted, make, make sure that they're affordable pursuant to the requirements in your bylaw. We, we have no objection to that. In terms of the rest of the market rate units, the intention here is to make some units that are available for, for, for people like that, that are, you know, folks that, that are looking for entry-level housing and aren't necessarily looking for the 3,000-square-foot plus houses that we're building in the town now that are, you know, a million bucks, which is hard to believe. But, so, I don't know what the final market rate is, but generally speaking, anytime you can propose a development, a permitted development that has increased density over what would be more of a comparative use, like a single-family or a duplex, you're going to, you're going to spread out those costs so that the, the end-using cost could be, can be less. However, like I said, the market bears the, the ultimate price on those market rate units.
Okay. Thank you. I'll open it up to the board.
The Fire Department has questioned the availability of a suppression system or sprinklers throughout.
Mm-hmm.
And where this is all individual water systems. Can you address that as to how you would?
Yeah.
Or ensure that?
Yeah.
That is provided?
I'll address it this way. We have no objection to that. Anything over three families or more, we, we know requires sprinkler systems in Massachusetts. Maybe in the United States, I'm not sure. I have, I am not a mechanical, electrical or plumbing or, or a fire protection specialist, but we have done fire suppression systems on, you know, fed off of wells before. There are different, I think, as was suggested in the, in the narrative, that there are different systems that are available. You likely have to introduce storage, so you likely have to put some cisterns in there so that you could provide the, so you can have a reservoir of water to feed that sprinkling system where you don't have a municipal water main supplying the pressure. I just did one, as a matter of fact, instead, for a elderly housing complex, 37-unit elderly housing complex, which is driven by a well and, you know, big, you know, commercial-style, commercial-style fire suppression system. We had to put a cistern in to have the, the flow. So, I know it's, it's possible. We don't have the details worked out. We know we have to comply with that regulation. We can't get around it. We're not asking you to waive any of those provisions. So, should you act favorably, we know we have to go through all that, that design effort as part of the building permit process. Brian will be asking for a fire protection affidavit and design and all that thing, all that, for the, relative to fire protection code. So, it's possible. I don't have the exact knowledge on what the system is. I know it's been done, and we know we have to do it. So.
The other thing, I noticed that the septic system for the one on the top.
Yeah.
Is pumped down.
Yeah.
All the others are pumped up, but that one lies halfway in Fitchburg.
Yeah.
Halfway in Lunenburg.
Yeah.
Do they have the same rules?
They do, yeah. They actually have slightly less restrictive rules in, in, in Fitchburg for septic systems. They're fair, they're pretty much a straight Title V jurisdiction, whereas Lunenburg has some supplemental Board of Health regs. We laid these out to be compliant with, with the most restrictive. But we, that permit would likely have to be a Fitchburg Board Health permit. And again, this is a, this process here before your board is the first stop on a very long permitting process. We have to, this isn't a, just get one permit and we're good. This is, we have to get all or nothing. So, we understand we have to, you know, we have to get this permit, but then we have to get a special permit from the Planning Board. We have to get a stormwater permit from the Planning Board, an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. We have to get an A&R Plan endorsed. We have to get septic permits from Lunenburg and perhaps Fitchburg. All that stuff has to happen before we can even apply for building permits, so.
I was actually surprised you started with the ZBA.
Well, if you're not going to give us the zoning relief.
Right.
It doesn't make much sense to do the other things, right? So.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions from the board?
Is it contemplated that these are basically rental units rather than a condominium?
I don't know if we've really decided on that yet. I, you know, I think they could be both in terms of how your bylaw reads. I think it would depend on, quite frankly, probably just economics after, you know, at the time they, they go to be constructed. I think they could be built and rented and owned by one, you know, each lot could be owned by one, one entity, or they all, could all be owned by one. Or they could be condoized, and you could create a condominium association, either for the entire four lots or for a condo association for each of the, each of the lots. So, I don't think that's really been decided yet.
In terms of parking, are you leaning towards garages?
Yes.
You, you have two different models, I think.
Yes.
One, one shows no garages, and the other shows garages.
Yeah, no, I, I thank you for that. I think we would, we would be looking at having garages for all, for each of the units. So, we'd have a one, one garage bay and a, we'd have two spaces for each unit. One would be in garage bay, one would be in the front, set up for all of the, all of the units. So, we do propose garages.
Is this it? These five units? Are you going to come back asking for more?
This site, in, in my opinion, as the engineer, after we've done the soil testing, doesn't, doesn't support any more lots. And your bylaw doesn't have, as a by, well, I get it, we're special permit, but there's no five-unit townhouses, I think, is your cap in your bylaw. So, I don't see a process through your, you know, permitting under your bylaw that would allow for any higher density. Thank you.
Other questions?
I'm okay, yeah.
All right. So, a couple questions, Mr. Chair. First of all, the question is, we've heard about two and three bedrooms. When it comes to the affordability, can we dictate which, which would have to be affordable? And so, I would lean towards the three bedrooms having to be affordable, because I'm looking at young families. We want to, need, we need more affordable housing for young families. We have apartments for, you know, young, young, not things, but I look for families. So, I would want to be able to dictate that the 20 affordable, the, the two affordable units would have to be three, have to be.
Well, right now, they're proposing three in every.
Yeah.
Every unit.
So, they, right now, they, they're all.
I know. You're showing two bedrooms, and you've already talked about the possibility it could be two bedrooms.
Yeah.
I'm saying, I would want to dictate that it would be only three, the only afford, the only way any of, the affordable units had to be three bedrooms.
Well, you would have to make two of them, right? 10%?
Yeah, two. So, I think, you know, Dave, I wish I, I wish I had this more on the forefront of my mind. When you're proposing a mix of unit types, so, I, I've got some other projects I'm working on that are larger projects, granted, but when you're proposing a mix of, say, two and three unit, you have to have a mix of two, you have to have a proportional amount dedicated for affordable in each category. So, you can't have a mix, you can't have, say, 10 twos and 10 threes and just make the twos. That's against the, the state regulation that's cited in your bylaw. You would have to have at least, in this case, you'd have to have at least one three and one two.
That's, that's.
So, I think, I think that the state statute covers you on that. I don't want to put words in your mouth. You're certainly willing, you're certainly in your purview to, to condition that. But I believe that the, the way the state statute is written, that covers you on that, on that topic. You, you can't, you cannot discriminate.
Right.
In, well, you can discriminate, you just then can't count them as your, as your affordable housing. But the state doesn't allow you to discriminate. So, I think if you have three-bedroom units, at least one of your affordables, at least a prerequisite percentage has to be from that three-bedroom stock.
Okay. All right. What is the width of the proposed road to get in?
18 feet.
Okay. I'm going to go through this again.
And, and again, you know, we have to go through the Planning Board process on this, so, you know.
Understand. But however, you know, you're looking at it as that I have almost a quarter-mile road heading to the last unit.
Yeah.
I mean, semantics, we're about 100 feet away from a quarter-mile road.
Yeah.
To get to the last unit. You have at least 500 feet from the, you know, from a unit with, with a narrow road.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm going to call it road, and you're going to have a minimum of 20, but a league, probably closer to 40 cars.
Yeah.
Going down that.
This, this conversation's sounding familiar.
Yes. Very.
Yeah, I don't know that we'd be objection to widening this to, say, a 20-foot, which would be a standard two-way road. I mean, I don't, you're probably right. You know, it's five units. I mean, there's 20 units. I mean, the planning board will likely have something to say on that, too.
And now regarding parking, is there a proposal for guest, guest parking? Where would guests, where would guests park on this?
Yeah. So we've kept all the driveways wide, too. So coming off, when we spur off into the, each lot's driveway, we've kept those extra wide at 18 feet. So you could have some parking along the edges.
And now I'm down to one lane?
Well, yeah, but that happens all the time, right? I mean, we could dedicate visitor spaces if that's, if that's what, we could do that. We have plenty of space on the site for that. So we haven't designated any right now, but we could certainly do that.
In addition to fire suppression or lot sprinklers for the townhouses, what about fire hydrants?
Yeah. So, well, again, the, there's no public water here, so we can't do a, yeah. So in my experience with these type of developments, we're beholden to do what the fire department requires. So, you know, there.
That might be the water district, not the fire department.
Well, the water district wouldn't come into play here because there's no water anywhere nearby. But, you know, I don't want to put words in their mouths, but they clearly have indicated and directed us to the state statute and fire protection code where we would need a sprinkler system. And we understand that. Whether or not that suffices for them, sometimes you can put a dry hydrant in. There is a pond across the street, I'll note, too, so there is a, there is a source of water across the street. So they did a, they did, the fire department did weigh in on this and review it, and they, they didn't seem to bring that up. But the bottom line is, the fire department's one of those departments that, you know, what they say goes. It doesn't matter when. They can say it in the, when we, they can get through this whole process, so we can file the building permit, and they can ask for something even then. So, you know, I would hope that they gave it a good look here and gave us a good, a good review, but there's no municipal fire hydrants anywhere nearby. So it would only be, it would have to be a dry hydrant type of system if it was required by the fire department.
This road that, this proposed road, what's the, any drop-offs? Any hazards?
Uh.
If someone's coming down a dark road and there's hazards, and someone coming down the other way, and he's got his LED high-beam lights on, and he drives off the road and goes into a ditch, then we get to call the fire department, and then the road's blocked. So is that taken into consideration?
Yeah, I think that's baked into the planning board's common driveway regulations, really, where they require the increase width. Your board may see fit to condition us, to condition this, to increase that width further. I don't think we would object to that. They also require turnouts. We're not showing those on this plan. It's not, it's not that detailed yet. You know, we, we see that as a finer point that'll be reviewed by the planning board. I'm not trying to say that you can't ask for it, but I'm just saying that we intend to fully comply with the planning board's requirements for common driveways and seek no waivers on that. And again, your board may see fit, I think it's within your purview to issue reasonable conditions relative to that, if you see fit.
So lot two, the proposed septic plant has like a thousand-foot feed to get from the units through wetlands?
Yeah. We'll probably.
That's okay?
We'll probably directionally drill it.
Okay. I know that's out of our jury.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll either directionally drill it, or we'll get easements to go across the, to go, to run it right down the driveway, one or the other.
And to do this, you have, and this is just, to do this, you have to divide it into four lots? It can't stay as one lot and do this on it?
Well, we have four lots. We've proven that there are four viable septic areas. So just from a.
Okay. I was going to say, I don't know if you could put four septics on one lot. That's, that was just more of a question.
Well, it's more just frankly, we can't put, we can't put four, five-family units on one lot.
Okay.
To be quite frank with you, your bylaw's pretty clear about that. It's five, five units per lot. So we, you know, we would love to be here with a 10-lot subdivision. If we had found it, we would have, you know, it might have been a little bit different. We might not have been proposing five, you know, townhouse units on each lot. But we would love to have, have had more lots here, but the soils just didn't support it.
I was curious why when all the lots were like five.
Yeah.
High acres.
Yeah, we tested the entire, you know, we tested, peppered the area with test holes, and it's just hit-or-miss material.
Instead of curiosity, what do they do with common areas in maintenance and townhouses?
With, oh, with common areas, you mean? Yeah. So, well, one or two, this gets back to the gentleman's point, whether or not, it will depend on what the mechan, the ownership mechanism is. If it's a, if it ends up being a, if one entity owns the lot and rents the units, that would be a property management company that would, that would maintain all of those common areas, the facilities, the well, the septic, handle the plowing and all that kind of thing. If it's a condominium association, if they're for sale units, then you'd have a homeowners' association or a condominium association with a master deed, where everybody, where those ownership, operation and maintenance details would be specified in a master deed. There'd be escrow funds that would be established for the maintain, maintenance of the system and repairing the roof and whatever else. So it will depend a little bit on what the final.
Final, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I was going to say, Mr. Chair, we have a long common drive, right? Four, four, four people have to, or four entities have to agree on maintenance.
Yeah. So at least four. I mean, if, I guess the worst case would be that all of them are conduised and you have 20, but.
Well, that's easier. That's easier, because you, right? You do it anyway, and you force it.
Yeah, you spread it out more.
Yeah.
But even if it was four, if it ended up being apartments and they, and you had four different entities, there'd just be, there's going to be a common driveway maintenance agreement that whoever owns, whatever the ownership structure is of the, of the units, they would enter into, you know, sharing, compensate, you know, agreement with the common driveway. So, yeah, there's probably going to be levels of legalese here, but it's certainly not something that isn't done, you know, fairly commonly.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just had two quick things. One of the, I think it was Board of Health said there was a proposed town water. That's definitely.
There's not town water, no. There's not town water proposed.
Okay, okay. But it was just in one note, but I know you.
Yeah.
And my other thing, basically, either building size looks like, like the units are kind of very similar square footage, whether it's three or two. Looks like two's actually a little bit bigger.
We used, I think we have, we have two-unit drawings in there, I think, in your packet, in the floor plans.
With Greg.
Well, the floor plan units, I think, in the, we used the larger, we used that one there for all of the units.
Okay.
Just to be conservative. So if some of these end up being two units, the building will get a little smaller, because I think those are the, those are the, excuse me, if some of them end up being two bedrooms, I think the building would, the overall size of the building, this, we're trying to make this represent a worst-case scenario.
Okay.
So we use the larger units.
Necessarily one or the other. It could be.
Yeah.
One and two of the.
Yeah, we, we set it up for the larger footprint on all five units in the townhouse, but it could very well be that some of them are smaller. But that's our, you know.
And even the two bedrooms will have garage?
Yes. Yeah.
And this doesn't affect the height at all?
No.
Being a three-story?
No, we're not proposing a height variance or waiver of, at this time.
So you're proposing a garage on the first floor.
Correct.
Where you have your entry.
Yes. Yeah.
So that cuts into what you're showing on any of these?
The, the last one in the picture kind of shows it.
There's the one? Oh, okay.
You have the garage, yeah, sort of a, yeah. I don't know what you call that kind of townhome, but.
Yeah.
We'd love to put the garages on the first floor. You know, that's the most economical way to use space, because you can, you take advantage of the basement for your garage. If you were to come in on the first floor with your garage, which everybody likes, everybody wants a first-floor garage, you take up square footage, so your units end up getting bigger. And then you, of course, you do have, you know, more basement space, but, so there's sort of pluses and minuses to all of it. The hill goes, you know, well, low at newest Townsend, and it climbs as you go into the site. It didn't seem to make much sense to force the issue and have the driveways come around the top of the, you know, we could have flipped the configuration of the garages and the, it just didn't seem to make any sense, you know? Then you'd have the back of the units facing, you know, the common driveway, and it just didn't seem like it made any sense, so.
Okay. And as far as the driveway is looking, is the worst grade anywhere near 10% or?
No, no. It's, it, we're not, there's no issues with grade here. We'll have some grading to make sure it works, you know? We have to put the profiles together and the grades to satisfy that, but we have taken a look at it. We're not, we're not up against a threshold there for the maximum slope, which I can't remember what it is for a common driver. It's less than 12, though, for sure. It might be 10. I can't remember.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll open it to the public. Anybody there would like to speak? Dave?
Oh, get old.
We know. Yeah, that's very true.
Dave Rogers, 82 Highland Street. I have a few questions. Snow plowing, is it the town's responsibility, or is it the association's?
It would be the association. It would not be the town.
Okay. In terms of access, how wide are these roads?
I think that's part of what we were discussing.
So he's proposing 18 feet. We're going to, I think it's going to be, it has to be wider than that.
I didn't.
It'll have to be, it'll have to be closer to a standard road of 20 feet. Standard road's 20 feet.
Okay. I understand that there are, this is at a preliminary stage, and it's difficult to earmark what certain costs would be. However, how, has there been a pro forma prepared for this project?
I don't.
Okay. Thank you. Because you can figure the thing backwards, right? You can figure the square footage, right? And then allocate a certain square foot cost.
Yeah, David, you need to talk to the board.
Oh, I'm sorry. So there is a way that you can, can kind of, sort of, figure out what kind of a price range we're looking at. And why I'm saying that is, that to me is a very important facet of this project, because I personally think that every effort should be made to provide affordable housing, whatever that is. And we can kind of know what that is beforehand, so it's very important. The other question I have is, there's a lot of figuring that has to be done here, and it seems to me that this discussion here might be premature. And by that, I mean, there are so many open things that need to be quantified and figured. I'm not sure that, that any kind of definitive approval could be given by this body until you have more information, which is all part of a process. So I wonder if I'm wrong in that.
I would just say, at this point, he came to us first because it's a use. The only thing before us is a use. Under our bylaw, 250, 4.1 H6, townhouses are allowed in the town by, but they require a special permit for that use. So what this board is looking at at this point is, and I believe what they're doing is, they say, if you guys turn it down, townhouses, we got to come up with a new plan. So I think they're just trying to say, we'll go here first, see if we can get the use approved.
I see.
And then we can move on.
Okay. Are these?
They got a lot of work, planning board, conservation.
And he's licking his chomps. It's an involved process.
Right. Very much so.
Sure, yeah.
Two towns.
This is very.
Two towns, too.
Well, that's the other thing I was going to say. I mean, you know, we have enough consternation sometimes within the town, and we don't, we don't need more, but, so that will have to be, it's, I think you get the point that I'm trying to. And, but the bottom line is, if it can be affordable and within the realm of a price for young or old people, I mean, I'm all for it. So realizing that it's at the beginning stages of the process.
It's the very beginning.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I'm sorry I gave you my back, but.
He gave you his best.
I'm sorry that I zinged you like that. No, he's a good guy.
When you're talking about the affordable, Lunenburg does have, where if you have 10 units or more, you get, 10% has to be affordable, which means they have to make in that.
Two.
Two units, definitely affordable, which I don't know if it's changed, but it used to be like 80% of the cost of.
Yeah. Which, which is, is not a big number, but every little bit helps.
Every bit helps, right.
Got to start someplace. All right. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Do we understand?
How you doing? Eric Lottie, 830, 3 newest Townsend Road in Fitchburg, actually. Address is Lunenburg, but we are in Fitchburg. We're directly across the street from the project. I got some serious concerns. The density of the five units, if you add those 20 units, if you go down Howard Street, you're not going to count 20 houses to the end of the street. You're not going to count 20 houses down newest Townsend Road to the end of the street in Lunenburg. I think it's way over building that little spot. I'm not opposed to development, everybody know, well, a few people know me, I've done developments. I do one house on four acres. That's the way it should be. That's the way that whole area is. I think it's going to be detrimental to the value of our houses. You know, you're putting in 3, 400,000, $500,000 houses or townhouses, and there's going to be, the other houses are in the probably millions, high hundreds of thousands of dollars. The other thing, fire is a big concern of mine. I had to put a dry hydrant in on my pond for three houses. There is no wa, there's not enough water in that area to put for sprinkler. I'm not an engineer, but lived out there all my life. There's a swamp across the street from this project on state land. I don't think they're going to let them put a dry hydrant in a state swamp. So I don't know where they plan on getting that water. Wells, there's just not enough pressure to run a sprinkler system. There's just, there's not enough water out there, period. You're drilling 500 feet to get a well. Very few wells there, over, run over-the-top, true artesian wells there. Most of them have to be fracked and that. The other thing is, is safety. That road after Stewart Road, where they proposed putting that driveway, comes to a severely sharp corner. That driveway is right before that sharp corner. You're not going to see people coming from Townsend. You're not. I've lost two mirrors on that street from cars coming down, coming from, I'm coming from Townsend, they're coming down newest Townsend, and they hit your mirrors.[1767.26] they're coming down New West Town and they hit your mirrors, that's how tight the road is there. The road is probably 25 feet there, the rest of it's 40 feet as you go down in front of my old family tree farm, which was the Lottie Tree Farm, not Pierce Tree Farm.
Sorry, I missed my thought. I realize I missed it.
Um, so, the road there is plenty wide enough, but the traffic is already heavy in that area and this is gonna add 40 plus cars to the area, it just, the roads can't handle it out there as they are, and we also have the O'Brien development, which is on top of the hill, which is adding to the Howard Street mess, so, I, those are my concerns. I, I definitely am not in favor, I'm not in, not, not in favor of him putting in single family houses, that's fine, that's not a problem, but I just don't see five condos on each lot, that just doesn't make any sense to me out there, doesn't fit the aesthetics of the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, would you like to answer any others' questions, especially though, the water issue as well? And the fire suppression, we know that's gonna be, they have to do it, it's done.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I wanna add much, I think I've addressed most of those things, except for maybe site distance, um, site distance being location, whether we come out on the road, again, that's gonna be a subject of the planning board process.
No.
We, we can't, we, I can't stress enough, we're not, you know, um, should you give us a favorable vote, we're nowhere near from being done.
Right.
Um, all of the engineering, and the, and the reason we're here first just to address that is because the next process is a lot more expensive. The, the engineered plans that we have to do and the drainage calculations and the, all the detailed engineering is, is a lot of money, and we would not ever advise a client to spend that money before he knows he has a project, because he'd just have to redo it, you know, they just have to redo it again, so, um, so I, I mean, I don't disagree, uh, those are gonna be, all the, the, the topics that were just raised are gonna be, um, are going to be, uh, topics as we proceed through the process. Um, I guess I would just say, I, I also don't, don't disagree that, um, there's not a lot of multifamily housing in the area, uh, but we're proposing to put these way back in the woods, I mean, it, it, we, we're not anywhere near the road, so from an aesthetic standpoint, I just don't think, you're not gonna see them. Um, I get the issue with the, um, with the, with the, I lived on the road, and I do apologize to the previous speaker, I used to get my Christmas trees at, at Lottie's, so I lived down the street, uh, for a number, for a decade plus, so I, I'm very familiar with the road myself. Um, it's a, it's a country road, um, we would be adding some traffic here, but it's not like we're, we're a busy road that already has traffic problems, I mean, I understand that, that the road gets narrow, we're gonna have to deal with traffic visibility issues, uh, through the planning board process for sure, but, um, I don't think that any, I don't think that adding traffic from those type of, from, from the proposed unit is gonna put us over a threshold where all of a sudden this becomes a road that's just can't carry the, the cars. Um, so, but again, I, I expect all those to be squarely in the, uh, in the category of the, of the planning board process, um, but it doesn't make, um, I'm not trying to say that it doesn't, uh, impact your decision either, but, um, I think the rest of it in terms of fire protection, it's sort of the applicant's, we understand, we have to comply, comply with fire code, uh, if we can't, then we can't, you know, but, um, we're, again, we're here as a first step and, uh, you know, that's a whole separate process. You know, if, if, if you were to give a, a special permit for this and then it's determined that it's infeasible to provide fire protection, that, that, then the project doesn't proceed because of that, but, you know, it doesn't, I don't necessarily think you, you have to base your decision on that because it's a, it's a totally separate and distinct thing that we, we need to get approval on that, we need to find a solution that's code compliant and it has to be economically feasible, so, I think that's it.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else from the audience would like to speak, please?
Hi, I'm Kevin Spatafor, um, I am the owner of Lottie Tree Farm, I am in a budding property, I moved there, I bought the property in 2017, I built in 2020, to have a nice respectable home in private areas to live, and it is gonna be in my backyard, for one thing. The other thing is, it is a good sized hill, there is a lot of erosion that comes down that hill, so when they start digging and all that stuff, I know it's gonna go into my property, 'cause it did on the O'Briens project, and I opposed on that and I explained to the town that this is all coming into my property, into the wetlands, all the runoffs, and nothing was done, but it stopped, so I didn't care. But, um, like, uh, I'm with Eric, you know, I'm not opposed of having some homes there, but this is way too much, you know, the water content up there is not gonna be enough, I mean, is it gonna affect my water? You know, I mean, I'm not much of a speaker, but I'm just gonna say in my point, I think it's way too much.
Uh, sir, where is your property in relation to?
I am on the corner of Howard and New West Townsend.
Okay, so you're across the street?
No, next to it.
No, I'm right next door.
Oh, you're about, okay, there's no, okay, right there, okay.
So actually, if I had to look, your home in relationship to this, your home would be?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'm just trying to get it.
So it's, it's the whole abutting property?
Right, now, same.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak?
So Daniel Brackett, um, the applicant, um, I just wanted to answer some of the questions people had. Um, for sure, we could put four very large houses here, um, with, you know, million-plus price tag. Our intent, so some of the questions were about affordability, right, so our intent in this was to make, to respond to the, that there's a housing crisis, there isn't enough affordable housing, and so the intent here is to develop housing that's affordable. Um, like, uh, like was said, is that affordability, it's the market, affordability's a moving thing, but, um, per the regulations, there'll, there'll be two affordable units, um, our intention is to, to keep prices down, um, and to have, you know, to not, we're abutted on two sides by town forests and open fields that, you know, a potential future development. So, I mean, yeah, we can put, we can put four very large houses here, and I don't know that that's gonna help affordability, and it's not, it's not gonna really help anyone. Right, so, um, and some of the things as we go through this process, we're very open to a dialogue, if there's, you know, the wider, wider driveway, the, um, you know, what, whatever, you know, needs to happen. We're open to, you know, having that dialogue, the, you know, places for other people to park, you know, visitors to park, um, it's, it's, it's just a conceptual plan and there's a lot of approval that we have to go through and there's, um, you know, when we can, we can move things around. If it's determined that it's best for the town, for it to be an association, a condo association, we'll make it a condo association, right? So it, it's just working through all the elements that have, that's gonna keep everyone , so that they're okay with it. We've been in town, we've been here over 20 years, we've been living in that house over 20 years, uh, we, our kids grew up here, we're a part of the community, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the board.
So Mr. Chick, um, having driven that road and looking at it, is, could, and we've, we've had others who have come to us with higher density, um, develop, air, kind of projects like this, and have asked about traffic studies. Is this something we could ask for before we can make a decision? Because I do look at that as, at, that is a key element, there was two, two points brought up today, and I do look at that as, that road is, might not be able to, or is that the best location for it?
Um, I'm not really sure to be honest, yeah, I do know we did a big traffic study that, you know, in, in, uh...
The Howard Street?
Yes.
All right.
You know, they came back, and that street is hard, they came back and said, no problem, they were talking, a much bigger development, but, uh... I mean, I, I mean, under use, would you, uh, address a traffic study to be?
You're asking?
Well, I'm asking the applicant, if you...
If we consider...
It really falls more on, you know, like I say, we're a use, not a, not...
I, I understand, but we're trying to make a determination on use, and I'm looking at a set of preliminary plans.
Right.
If I have to look at this, I look at, I would say that parking's not adequate for any of this, any of these units, safety's an issue and all that stuff, so I, but that's what I'm saying, I have trouble...
This may, this, it may, may come back to us.
Okay, because I have trouble like...
You know, I'm not saying it will, I'm just saying there's a possibility it would come back.
Okay, so I guess that's like a...
If there are any other issues that relating to zoning.
Okay.
Did you have a question?
It's, it's not a question, it's just...
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if we can condition a traffic study, I'd have to look into it.
Okay.
Where is the O'Brien property in regards to that map?
Actually, it's on Howard Street.
Yeah. I feel the same way as you, they, that was a huge project and they, two different people came in and told us it was fine.
It's a different road though.
Yeah, it is a different, but I'm just saying, the other one, in my opinion, is even more...
It was 200, how many units was?
But again, I mean, I'm not opposed to it.
No.
I just don't know...
200, 200.
Right, so 20 times more, a little ways up, and they said it was okay.
Right.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not a traffic engineer, but when you do the analysis on these size, when you, when you do the analysis on these size thing, I mean, it, it just doesn't put that much traffic, you, you're talking about traffic that really doesn't meaningfully increase the, you know, you, you spread the traffic out over hours from a, from 20 units, so it just doesn't, it doesn't tend to really...
I, I, I understand, I mean, I'm not a big, you know, I look at traffic studies as they don't often really dictate because, right, nobody's really looking at that, okay, it's rush hour, sun's sitting here at this angle, and all that stuff.
Well, they, they, well, they don't look at the sun angle, but they look at, they look at peak hour and they analyze that, I mean, that, but I just, I just think in a development the size, you're, you're likely to have, the, the, the traffic is likely to put out like five extra vehicles in a peak hour from 20, from 20 units.
Well, I don't know about, that would be 20 extra vehicles in a peak hour.
No, no, and it's...
Everybody going to work.
Yeah, but they all go to work at different time, I'm just trying to say, it's, even if it was 10, even if it was 20, Dave, 20 vehicles in an hour is not, it's just not that much, right?
Every minute.
I mean, I'm not trying to minimize the fact that we're proposing 20 units, it's just, I, I mean, I, I appreciate a few of the, you know, a lot of times, you, you know, applicants spend a lot of time and money putting these traffic studies together and they just, you know, and you do have a, you do have an, um, you know, an example, you know, you do have one that was done recently, I get it's on a different, adjacent street, but, I mean...
I have a question, when we're talking about traffic, families, what about a school bus? What about the school bus route, coming up that road, what do you, what, you got a plan? Were we gonna bus stop at the end or?
It would have to be, because it's not gonna be a town road.
Yeah, well, yeah, they wouldn't be able to go up the driveway, so yeah, they would have to stop at the end, I would say, yeah. Like, quite frankly, like they do at every other driveway in town, they don't, they, in fact, this would be better than the other drivers in town, I mean, my kids were, the bus stopped at my house and then it stopped at the house across the street and then it stopped at the house next, I mean...
I've never understood that.
Yeah, they, there's no centralized bus stops anymore, it seems like, but this would be clearly, you know, you'd have any kids that are in this, they'd have to go down to the, the bottom.
Then again, I'd have all the parents sitting there waiting for the kids, blocking the road.
All the cars blocking the road.
Well, they'd probably be in the driveway. But, no, you're right, they drive down, I get it, no, I see, I mean, I'm with you, believe me, I've, I get it.
So, yeah, I'm gonna build a school bus stop, I guess, huh? Gonna build them a hut?
Well, I mean, I guess, I, I suppose, I never had a hut when I was a kid, but all right.
I don't want Johnny and Suzie getting wet, waiting for the bus.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, cold, yeah.
Yeah.
Heated hut. Half the kids get driven to school now, I'm just saying, half of them don't even drive the bus anymore, but...
If we make it affordable, there might be two families that have one car, right?
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I can't...
Throw it all out there.
No, I, I hear you, I can't, I can't, I can't disagree with you, but I just, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to do because we don't have, you know, plans that, you know, the first step, it's hard. Um, y'all say?
I am, yeah.
Would you like to speak?
Melanie Lottie, 833 newest Townsend. As for the bus, the bus stops at the corner of Howard and New West Townsend, and then it goes up Howard, it does not go further down the road. That corner where the bus stops, there's two, there's two families that get on the bus there, and you already have to park on the side of the road, right there, to wait for the bus, 'cause they don't stop at every house anymore, it's a, that's the common stop at the corner, and those kids will have to walk all the way down to the corner, past the Spatafores' house, and wait for the bus.
Okay, so, are, are there Lunenburg houses further down the New West Townsend Road?
If there is, that, that bus does not go that way, I don't know if there is, but...
There's one.
There's one.
There's two houses, there's, you put them out and then there's one more house. I'm a school bus driver, can I, yeah, right?
You have to, you have to come up.
You have to come up, then I give you a name and address and then say whatever you would like.
Yes, after all, you used to be in the front, so...
Yes, that's fine, my name is Rachel Brackett, I live at 850 New West Townsend Road, so I am a school bus driver, I drive for D, so I drive in Lunenburg, and in Townsend, there is a turnaround, the bus doesn't go down because there's not enough houses, that's why the bus comes down Howard Street and goes down a New West Townsend, or comes down New West Townsend and goes up Howard Street, but if that is a problem, they would have to address the bus company, and the bus company would have to go down the road and could turn the buses around on the Townsend-Lunenburg line, because there is a spot there for a bus to turn around. That's how school buses address those issues if there's a problem with that.
I appreciate it.
And my girls, they do, they used to go to the corner of New West Townsend and Howard Street as well to take the bus, before they moved in and built their houses across the street.
Okay.
Across the street, there didn't used to be a house until they built their own houses.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the information. Okay, back to the board. Anybody else before we bring it back to the board? Okay, all right, I'm gonna cut off the public discussion, we'll bring it back to the board. Um, as far as, you know, we, the driveway, we can say is a condition, you want 20 feet, you know, versus what they said 18, so we can condition that, that it's conditioned on that, one condition. Um, the traffic study, I would...
I, I, I understand what's gonna happen in the traffic study, I mean, look, it's, it's obvious, it's, they're not, it's not like it's a busy road, adding 12, 10 cars...
We could also, we could also leave it up to the planning board.
Correct, yes.
Because they've got to, you know, they, they're gonna see much more detail and they're gonna have more information on what they're already, you know, what they're gonna do than we have at this point. Go ahead.
I, I should note that the planning board is going to have a third-party peer review engineer to, um, to review my work, it's, they're not gonna take my word for it.
Really?
Yeah.
After all this time?
Yeah, believe it or not, so they, they're gonna review all of those, so just, I just thought to mention it.
Okay.
So are we able, but I, I know I've mentioned about the road, am I able to put a condition about parking?
Um, it's kinda hard because we don't have a layout on it, you know what I mean? But again, planning board's gonna do all of that, they're not, you know, they're not gonna have, they have to have parking, you know what I mean? They don't even know if they're gonna put the garages in yet, they say they are, who knows?
And that's, Ms. Chick, that makes it difficult to...
It makes it difficult to us because what's before us is use. In the bylaw, the way it reads, it just says, townhouses... it just says townhouses are allowed by special permit.
Understand. And that, I understand that. But now we're making a determination on, is this the proper use for this area?
Exactly. Right now, you're only concerned with... The bylaw says that they're allowed with a special permit from ZBA. In other words, you just can't build them by right.
Right.
Dan Brackett, 850 New West Townsend Road.
Speak up. More into the mic.
Concerning parking or visitor parking, I mean, again, we're amicable to work through any differences. So, we can say... We can set a specification that there has to be three spots per unit, right, and not designate where they are.
And there's bylaws for that. They're going to kick in. The planning board is going to determine what...
I mean, so for... That's a concern and you want to put in a requirement, we can say we can have visitor parking. As Greg indicated, there's a ton of space. So, we can put a place to have visitor parking or we can expand the parking area at each unit to accommodate. Right now, it's kind of designed for two cars per unit, but we can design it for three. And so, if that's a concern or something that you want to stipulate, we're open to that stipulation. And I think it should be defined, like, you know, three cars per unit as opposed to just lots of parking, right? Or we need more parking. Because, you know, you...
So, I think your bylaw, you'd find that your bylaw would... Your off-street parking requirements would require two. Okay? I don't think they say anything about visitor spacing, spaces. So, per Dan's comment, if you required three per unit instead of the two, you'd effectively be getting five visitor spaces on every lot, which seems to be a reasonable place to start, but I'll leave it up to you.
I agree. I just... What I'm seeing here is just, I look at it, it's just...
I understand.
It's hard to say. It's a tough, tough one. I would not want to see cars parked on those roads. Or I should say driveways. Parked on those driveways. They're not roads, they're driveways.
And we agree. So, I mean, I think we could easily throw five, you know, five parking spaces on each of those, in front of each of those units with no problem at all.
And it also makes it for me to look at it as... It makes it for emergency apparatus. It gives more room for them because if I'm looking at double density in cars, I have... I mean, I don't know how you guys are, but I haven't gotten a car in the drive... Two cars in the driveway in a garage in a long time. But the fact is, is that that's, you know, you're going to end up with probably two cars out and that doesn't make it easy for fire... Emergency apparatus there.
All right. I think we've discussed it enough. Unless anybody else has another question. Back to the board. Board only.
I would just say, I mean, I don't think the ask is just sticking my head in this book. I don't think the ask is asking for a lot out of this book. I'm sure there's a lot of money there. Septic plans. I'm sure this wasn't cheap. I think just what's in front of us... I mean, I could sit here until midnight and come up with more questions, but I don't know that that's really my place. And I think a lot of the next steps are going to involve a lot of engineering. And I mean, as far as parking, like, we don't really know if it's two-bedroom or three-bedroom yet. Not 100% on garages.